Good evening. I'd like to call the regular council meeting of March 20th to order. There's one item that we'll be pulling out of the consent calendar, which is the minutes for the council work session on February 20th. There's some missing information on one of the paragraphs, and we'll just pick that up at the next council meeting. So this consent calendar consists of the minutes from the council meeting on February 20th, the minutes of the special council meeting from March 12th, and the minutes from the special council meeting on March 13th.
I move to approve.
As part of this discussion, which we really aren't probably supposed to have, I'd like noted for the record that on the minutes of the March 13 meeting, that I had noted that I had reviewed the audio files from the meeting on March 12 prior, you know, the night prior. And so when I voted for the replacement councillor, I was, I had heard all of the interviews. I just, that doesn't seem to be included in the 3:13 minutes. It's not a substantive one, but I think that it would be appropriate to be there. So no objection.
So do I have a second?
A second.
And that's a second of that amendment. All those in favor of the consent calendar with the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. The consent calendar is done, and now we move on to swearing in a new councillor. Come on up, please.
If you can reach right down and repeat after me. I, Roxanne Belts.
I, Roxanne Belts.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Oregon.
Of the state of Oregon.
The Charter and ordinances.
The Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Monmouth.
Of the city of Monmouth.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of city councillor.
Of city councillor.
Of the city of Monmouth.
Of the city of Monmouth.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome to the night.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And this evening, I have no mayor's report, and so we'll move on to reports of council representatives for boards and commissions. Councillor Slavernagel.
Arts and Cultural Commission did not meet this month. They canceled the 12th meeting, so the next one is April 9.
All right. And councillor Johnson, Historic Commission, planning commission.
Right. I was not there, but I got the minutes, and go with them. Susan gave us, let's do plenty, gave us, gave them an update on the certified local government grant, which we have standard for a good chance. And that's a two-year grant to help us with some of the signage, some of the survey of the buildings in town that are, we're going to qualify as historic. As you all know, they're really digging hard for the commission. For the May 5th is going to be the Senior Center breakfast also will be the kickoff for the commission for the Historic Preservation Month. It'll start at that breakfast. And right now, what they're trying to do is get the display set up for the library, which they'll put in at the end of April. And they're also going around and talking to people about putting some of the signs in the businesses that are listed, so we can, so if anybody took the walking tour, they could see what's going on in the town. And the historic display, that's been a big thing for two years. And what they're down to now is getting approval from the Parks Board, so they can put a sign up over by the amphitheater. And what it's going to be, what they want to do is have a separate one, not added to the building, and then it'll be on the concrete support and give a background of what really went on right there at that corner, and all the historic railroad that went on at that corner. And the other one was, we've kind of gotten a little bob at Edgar. He's shared a lot of handouts from the people of Monmouth, Illinois, Christian church that sent the original people to Monmouth, Oregon. And so they're putting some of that together to show where our history started.
Thanks. Councillor Shankle.
Parks and Recreation Board met on February 22nd. There was some updates regarding the skate park. Formal inspection was completed and determined the skate park can remain open for at least a few more years with some minor repairs. Reminder of the 2018 recreation grant program. The grant applications are due March 1st, and will be reviewed at the March Parks and Recreation Board meeting, which is on the 22nd next week. The board reviewed the list of park projects and discussed projects to delete and add. An updated list will be provided by Suzanne. And lastly, a Parks Grant, the board supported submitting a grant application to a Parks Grant program available to the state of Oregon. And the grant requires a 40 percent match requirement, and the maximum grant award is $50,000. So the board will be working on that process. Can I conclude my report?
What was the deadline again for the grant application?
For the recreation grant? It was March 1st.
Oh, it's past, okay.
Coming along.
Okay.
Councillor, did you have some?
Yeah. The Tree Board met on last Thursday on the 15th, and we have Arbor Day coming up on the April 28th. We also plan to replace the trees at Monmouth Elementary School that were planted in memory of some children who died. Mary Lozo of the Monmouth Garden Club has graciously donated enough money to pay for one of the trees, which will be a great myrtle. And then the board is also planning, with some community input, to plant a pear tree near the time capsule, when we put all the stuff in the time capsule. And then on Saturday, April 28th, as part of Arbor Day, we would like to have an official laying of the plaque in front of the Veterans Heritage Tree at Monmouth, at Madrona Park, rather. And it would be very nice if we could have, say, a Boy Scout color guard as part of that presentation. So if you're involved with Boy Scouts and you can do a color guard presentation, that would be very nice. We'll also be doing some work there in the arboretum, so if you don't have anything better to do, or even if you do have things better to do, on Saturday, April 28th, we'll be doing some work there. We need volunteers. So thank you very much.
All right. Are there any community announcements?
I would just like to point out that the Luckumu Watershed Council will be hosting a number of upcoming bird walks to do some walking and watching for birds. So it's on their website, luckumuwatershedcouncil.org, so you can go in and take a look at that and join them for a bird walk if you like.
All right. And Minister of Work.
Yep, yep, thank you. Yeah, a few items. Highway 99 project, we finally have all of our approvals from ODOT for the electric side and the water side, so our crews, contractors, will be in there by next couple of weeks starting up, and they'll start the disruption, the continued disruptions as Northwest National Gas went first. What we did find out is all the utilities can get their work out of the way, ODOT will actually be starting at the Popman Road and then working their way back. So about, probably around like July, they would actually get in. And then the theory is that all the utilities are out of the way by the time they get there. So, and it'll be a season of just watching and paying attention to where the various disruptions and things are going to be. Senior Center, we had a discussion previously about the deck, and it wasn't funded previously in the budget process. And they actually have a new idea of using a scout group to build the deck, so they're getting that honed in as some options, and that looks like it's pretty viable, and they're moving forward with that. Get a timeline, and it gets a little bit more nailed down. And then another building project, the Power and Light Building. Big thing to do right now is review by Division of State Lands and Corps of Engineer, because we are on the wetland property. And they are putting us through the wringer, literally. Questions ranging from why are you even on this property? Why did you pick it? To reconfiguring the site. They determined that we should not have off-street parking, telling us to split our boneyards into different pieces. They're really getting it a once-over. So they have a process, they go, it'll take probably a couple of months before we can actually get in there and get their process done. But we just work along, answer their questions, and try to get an approval or something. Otherwise, that's it.
All right. You got a question?
I do. Why is that new information that that's a wetland?
Oh, it's not new information, just that they have a permitting process. And so anytime you submit, then they go into the site, and then they start analyzing, you know, where your building are, why'd you put parking lots here, and then they go through, and then eventually, out of all that, you might need to make adjustments to the parcel. And at some point, they will determine exactly, you know, how many acres or square feet of wetland you have, and then they'll go into what credits we need to purchase. That's just all part of the process.
On this bid and contract, we know for a fact that the architect delayed us by five or six months. He put us behind. He started first. He put, so what I want to know is, you know, what were the costs of the primary or the early bids on concrete on our project? You know, because we kind of took those early bids as what it was going to cost, you know, the contractors. And in that seven months or six months, the price went up. I'd like to see what the difference is, because I think, as far as I'm concerned, the architect is responsible. If he put us behind and we were first, the cost factors would be his. If it's 20 percent, he ought to be paying the 20 percent, is what I'm saying. We were the first ones there. He got a bid from the school district, he shoved offs off the side, worked the school district first. And I think it cost us a lot of money, because the prices have gone up since we first got our preliminary cost.
Yeah. I'll talk to Chuck, I'll see what he has. I'm not too sure where they were with estimates way back when, but.
But that's one thing, comparisons, we got to have you.
Thank you. Sure.
All right. Moving on, are we finished now?
Yeah.
Okay. So moving onward to citizen comments. This time is reserved for citizens to comment on items that are not on the agenda item on the agenda. Maximum of three minutes per item, please. Is there anyone who'd like to speak at this time?
Yes.
Elliot? Come on forward, please.
My name's Elliot Dickinson. I live on Broad Street, 371 Broad Street North. And on January 27th, the Polk County Fire Department did a controlled burn on the house next to mine, which is 351 Broad Street North. And that fire burned a lot hotter than they thought, than anyone thought, and it did a lot of damage. It burned, burned the vinyl off the windows of my house, which is only 20 feet away. It probably damaged the siding of my house. It just torched about 10 kind of unique trees that were on my property in between the two houses. So some damage happened. But I think the real underlying problem is that the fire department, they gave us three days' notice. They put a letter in our doors in that neighborhood and said, "We're going to burn on Saturday." About three days before. And that was pretty much it. And as far as I know, they did not do a test to see if there was asbestos or lead in this 130-year-old house that got burned down. And if you go by there now, it looks like a bomb went off. There's a huge crater at 351 Broad Street North. So it just showered the whole neighborhood with dust, and my wife now won't eat out of our garden, hasn't since January. But what I want to say is, The Oregonian on February 2nd had this article on the front page with the title, "Portland adopts rules to contain lead and asbestos in home demolitions." And I'll just read you a couple of sentences from this. So the first sentence reads, quote, "Portland instituted its first crackdown on lead paint and asbestos emissions from home demolitions Thursday. The city council of Portland voted unanimously to require developers who plan to tear down homes to more thoroughly search for lead and lead paint and asbestos, to notify nearby neighbors, and to undergo at least two city inspections to ensure the company follows its own toxic containment plan." And the reason that this is necessary is, in this article, it says, quote, "Breathing airborne asbestos fibers can cause cancer. Breathing lead particles can cause brain damage." Unquote. It goes on to say in this article, quote, "Studies suggest that people within 300 feet of a demolition could experience noticeably higher levels of lead dust. So anyone living in that zone must be notified in advance with a sign on their door." So anyways, I would encourage the city council to also follow the Portland City Council lead. They voted unanimously to have lead and asbestos testing and basically ban this type of burning. It happened right in the middle of our town. And right across the street from where I live is a city with, is a family with a bunch of kids, and nobody got any warning whatsoever. So that's what I have to say.
Right. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Can we put this item on the work session agenda? Item, sorry. Okay. I would like to note for the record, too, that recent research published by Bruce Lanfier, who is a well-respected researcher in lead, lead issues, is that we can count 250,000 deaths from cardiovascular disease in the United States each year due to exposure to lead. So thank you for bringing that up. Thank you.
So are there any other citizen comments on non-agenda items at this time? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item number one, which is to adopt our council goals. I believe this is you, Scott.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, just a note, we have a goal-setting session each year, and this year the council met on February 3rd, 2018. We had a pack of notes from the session, we covered all the range of discussion, the key item for you tonight is actually approving the goals that were agreed upon at that meeting. And for the 2018-19 year, those would be, determine approach to City Hall upgrade, establish a path for the UGB expansion, obtain additional stormwater funding, develop a commercial retail space portfolio, review the transportation plan, and emphasize citizen engagement and communication. Staff would recommend approval of those goals.
And on the sign-in sheet, I believe there's comments from Nan Willis, that will be right into the record by Laurel. You might as well just stay here.
Okay. Again, this is from Mrs. Nan Willis, who lives on Martin Way in Monmouth. Dear council members, when I saw your goals posted, it occurred to me to look up definitions. A goal is an aim or a desired result. A strategy is a plan of action or policy designed to achieve a major or overall goal. A task is work to be done or undertaken. Therefore, goal number one, determine an approach to an upgrade of Monmouth City Hall is a strategy. Establish a path for the, an expansion of the Monmouth urban growth boundary is a strategy. Obtain additional stormwater funding is a task. Develop a commercial retail space portfolio is also a task. Review the Monmouth transportation plan is a task. And emphasize citizen engagement and communication, which is kind of what I'm doing right here, is finally a goal. Consequently, and with the exception of the last one, they feel like so much business as usual and not much to inspire in organization. It seems that whoever facilitated the council's discussion needed to have some grounding in the meaning of words. And again, this is a letter from Mrs. Nan Willis. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, do I have a motion to receive our goals?
I move approval of the 2018-19 goals as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Pass it to Nan. Moving on to the next item of business, item number two, which is the bicycle tourist campsite. I believe this we're going to have.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple introductory comments, and then Kyle Janssen from the Bike Ped Committee will be giving the presentation. So the issue before you is an ordinance to do a temporary bicycle campground at General Woods Park. And so that would be in the northwest corner of the park. The key thing on temporaries, we just go through a season to check the effects. We've got documentation there about some of the main parameters of the item. We did have an open house on this discussion, and Kyle will report on that, too. As it goes all the way through, follows up, you could actually approve the ordinance, not. Staff is recommending approval of the ordinance. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Kyle. Over to Kyle, please.
Thank you, councillor. I know this has already gotten your attention before tonight, since we're here in January, I believe. But for some of you, you were not around, we've had several, you know, short informal presentations at your work sessions, but we've never really done a formal presentation about the campsite to the full council. And at least three of you are new members since we first started on this project. So I'm going to go through quickly the presentation that we made at the informational meeting for the community, and briefly summarize that, so that you can start off with the same background that many of these people in the audience have already heard, so they're already familiar with it. So the Bike Ped project goes back to the Monmouth Engaged project back in 2015, which was an effort by the city council to determine what some of the key issues and future direction of Monmouth, as it was envisioned by people who lived, worked, and played here. And they came up with, out of that, council established four committees to work on those issues, one of which is the Bike Ped effort. Now, the resolution that you, the council adopted to create our committee directed it to explore ways to make Monmouth a destination for bicycle tourism, and to look at some other issues related to bicycles and pedestrians. And so the Bike Ped Committee has started off with a number of ideas in mind. There were more than a page full of ideas. And so we've worked on a few of the ones so far. We've gotten a grant to help install the two bike repair stations, one by City Hall and one by the restroom at Main Street Park. We're currently working on this idea of a small bicycle tourist campground. We also would like to get Monmouth on some bicycle tourism maps, and if Monmouth is going to be a destination, it needs to be on a map. We are looking at finding ways to promote bicycle events within and through Monmouth. And then our ultimate goal is to establish Monmouth as a bike-friendly community status, much like the Tree City USA designation. There's, it'll take many years to reach that level, but it's our goal out there. So there's lots of facts out there to support the idea of bicycle tourism. You've probably heard many of them. There's a lot of people participating in it, and it's really become an emphasis in Polk County, along with viticulture tourism. That are the major focuses of the Polk County World Tourism Studio. And you may have also noticed that our sister city to the east is also starting, building a conference center, which has a lot of facets devoted to bicycle tourism. We are much more modest in the proposal that we are having for bicycle tourist campsite. We're keeping it small at this point, so that there would be little or no cost. We wanted to select a location where the campsite would have minimal impact on neighbors. We chose a community park with a broader set of activities rather than a neighborhood We are recommending this one-season trial between now and the fall to evaluate feasibility. Is it going to work? Is it not going to work? And we've also worked to establish some rules and safeguards to ensure both the public's and the park's safety. So how did we go about choosing General Woods Park? We found these facets of General Woods that we thought were important. One is it's a community park, and one of only four parks with a seasonal restroom. This community park designation is in the Monmouth City Parks Master Plan. The site is on Highway 99, so it's easy for cycling tourists to find it. It's near one of the public bike repair stations. It's also close to the police station, so it would be easy for touring cyclists to register and for the police department to monitor. And the campsite location is separated from the playground area and distant from neighboring houses. So this next slide shows how the campsite would be located. We would like to put in some signage near the parking area as well. We'd like to put in some of those little staple bike parking racks there, so that both bicycle tourists and neighbors and other Monmouth citizens could go over there and be able to park their bike. But in terms of this proposal, the council doesn't feel that's important. That's, you know, that's a place where a cost can be cut back. The restrooms are already there, and then the campsite is actually in the northwest corner of the location. And this next slide shows how it would look with a tent set up there. This was taken last fall during our community meeting there. We set up a tent, and people came over and joined. So this is taken from the other side of the creek. And then this next photo shows how it looks in wintertime, but there's already the cooking grill there, as well as the picnic table, so it would not require additional construction of facility. So one of the things that we have heard quite clearly is that, you know, there needs to be some rules and regulations governing this bicycle tourist campsite. So what we're recommending is that there be no more than four campers there, and no more than two tents. The tents would be in that designated area in the northwest, a limit of one night. Cyclists must register with the police department, with checking in earlier than 3:00, and departure would have to be by 10:00 the next morning. Campsite would be subject to existing regulations, and as a precautionary measure, if there was a drought like there was last summer, we would, you know, suggest that maybe it could be closed, you know, should be closed down. And we also wouldn't want it used during particularly soggy conditions, that would damage the ground, that is, the foliage and stuff that are growing there now, the limited amount of grass that is there and there. So after we made our proposal, we did some background work. We talked with the Parks and Recreation Commission, and their concerns were related to the making sure that the ground cover was not damaged during wet conditions. The Public Works Department didn't feel that there would be issues of garbage related caused by, or that there had been no issues of garbage caused by tranchings at General Woods Park. And so we assumed that we would, you know, be having, one of the rules being that the cycle tourists would be picking up their trash as well. We also heard a lot of comparison with what is happening in Independence, and so we sent an inquiry over to find out what their experience with their bicycle and boating campsite is. And that they said they do not believe that their problem with homeless people downtown has been influenced or caused by having a bicycle boating campground. They don't feel like there's an increase in crime because of the campground. But their council was also concerned about people who might be staying there longer than, well, they wouldn't be tourists. And so they placed a two-day maximum stay on campers. Our proposal is for a one-day stay for campers. So we had our meeting on February 13th over at the library with questions and discussion. Very lively evening. So, we had our meeting on February 13th over at the library with questions and discussion. Very lively evening, probably 40, 50 people there. And afterwards, the Bike Ped Committee met and discussed and reviewed the numerous suggestions that were made there as well as the questions that were raised. And we've sort of grouped them together into four essential topics. One is, how has the campsite been operating? You know, how does somebody check in? How are we going to monitor that it's being taken care of? Another major concern was drug use, vagrants, and potential criminal activity in the park and the potential impact of the campsite on it. The third major category of discussion was folks who wanted the campsite, they thought it'd be better located at Main Street Park or even having the city buy some land and constructing a bicycle tourism campsite elsewhere in the city. And there were also talk, discussion about the benefits of the bicycle tourism campsite to our community. I'm not going to go into all the details because there were a lot of facts and pieces of information out that, that were not necessarily always in agreement. And some saw the site as beneficial, some saw, some people saw it as harmful. So, let me wrap up by looking at some of the key points. Making Monmouth a bike-friendly community is one of the top community priorities for their vision of what our city is. And this includes making Monmouth a destination for cyclists. Alternative locations have been considered. We believe that Gentle Woods is a site, it's a site in a community park, it's adjacent to the bike, existing bicycle path and repair station, and it's near the police station. It's minimal cost. The concern about change and potential crime is normal. Until the campsite operates, it will be impossible to know the positive or negative impacts of the, for the park, the neighborhood, and the city. This proposal is just for a six-month trial period. If a serious health or safety issue develops before the conclusion of the trial, I'm sure the city already has the authority to close down the campsite. So, it's a six-month trial to test out all the different scenarios that we've heard in our meetings that could happen, whether it be drug use or people being able to go to our businesses because they've stayed overnight here. You know, we want to test all those theories out. As, I believe it was Police Chief Tallon said, when asked what effect that he thought the campsite might have on crime in the neighborhood and the location, he said, "Well, until we test it out, we really don't know what's going to happen." We've conducted research, we've created some rules that we think will prevent most potential problems. And we've done it with a minimal cost to the city and minimal impact on the infrastructure. So, we've tried to listen to everybody, but it's council's decision. And I'm willing to answer questions now or later, after you hear from, I'm sure, the many people who want to tell their version of what this campsite is.
I'd just like to, I'd just like to thank the Bike Ped Committee and acknowledge all the hard work you put into this, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, I shouldn't have introduced them here, but I think many of them want to speak later, so.
Thank you.
So, are there any other questions from the panel?
Well, I'd like to hear the other side and then we can ask back.
Okay, alright.
Well, there's more than one other question. There'll be many.
So, I'm going to start with this sheet. I can't quite make out the last name here, Richard from Monmouth.
Needless to say, you can't read a physician's handwriting. I'm Richard Bruce, MD. I have a vested interest since 1962 in these two communities, having practiced medicine for 34 years here. I have two concerns in relationship to the bicycle camping. That if we have the assurance that the police will monitor this facility closely, it might have a beneficial effect of cutting down on the rest of the crime or, and/or drug use and/or shenanigans that go on with young adults in the park. If it would show an improvement in the park and if the police department are more than eager to monitor the situation, it may cut down on the shenanigan part that is, that does happen in the park. And I think the cables are more capable of commenting about that than I am, that if it reduced this, it's a benefit. The other aspect of the bicycle friendly is that I had made a comment to the committee chairman that one can advertise this and there may be a lot of empathy in the community by citizens who would love to have these bicyclers camping in their backyard, provide a bedroom, provide showers in their own homes. That's not an impossibility. Another concern that I have, which, Monmouth is a pretty nice little community to live in, and I'd like to emphasize this a little bit. When you consider extension of the growth boundaries of the city, you want to stop the rickroy or whatever, you know, and we don't have the infrastructure of that, and you may be destroying the livability of Monmouth itself by expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Dalton.
Hi, Councilwoman, Councilor Betts, it's a pleasure to meet you. I read the materials in your packet pursuant to business agenda item number two, bike campground, and noticed the following. On February 20th, Councilor Sharma read a letter from Al and Jane Oplinger in opposition to the camping proposal. Not only is Mr. Oplinger an avid cyclist, his property borders Gentle Woods Park. You would be very well served to read the letter in its entirety. Manager McClure's March 14 summary of the February 13 Bike Ped Gathering at the library stated, "Most attendees were in opposition to the proposal." Former community members submitted three pages of supportive opinion for the benefits of bicycle tourism. That was in the packet you received. Their privately funded spoken hostel in Mitchell, Oregon counts indoor bunkhouses, showers, free Wi-Fi, continental breakfast, web registration, and the managers reside in close proximity to the site. Nice information, but it did not seem extremely applicable to this, this particular conversation. And unfortunately, not included in the packet that, that Councilor Betts, Belts, sorry, received, were original signatures of 38 adults whose homes border or are in immediate proximity to the park in opposition to the proposal. Their safety, security, and home equity are already in jeopardy because current day use ordinance has not been adequately enforced. An additional 246 adult residents agree that Gentle Woods Park already suffers from enforcement neglect. Cover/summary sheets are attached. Postscript, "As a child, if I did not clean my bedroom, I was not allowed a sleepover." Do you see the correlation?
Thank you.
And the next comments are from Elliot Dickinson.
I'm just in favor of having the bikes here because I rode my bike here tonight. I ride around town all the time, so.
Okay. And the next is Stephanie De Pasco.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie De Pasco, and I live in Monmouth. I'm 1876, Ash Creek Drive East. I've been resident here for two years. As a senior citizen, I ride my bike almost every day. I take classes at Western Oregon University, and I ride my bike there when I can. Part of the reason I live in this community and in this area is because it lends itself to outdoor activities for all ages. I think it's terribly important that you be a welcoming community to bikers from other areas that are using Highway 99 and coming back and forth. I understand very clearly that people are a little bit shy of having strangers come into Gentle Woods Park, regardless of how far away from their front porches they are. It's a new experience, but I can't see that it's going to cause any real problems to try it. Simply try it for about three or four months and see what direction it takes. And you might find that it attracts exactly the kind of people that you want coming through this community and using it. Thank you.
Right, that is good. And next on the list, Carol McKeel.
So, I'm a member of the Bike Ped Committee. The bicycle tourist camp in Gentle Woods Park is part of a bigger plan to bring bicycle tourism to Monmouth, and with bike tourism, the tourist dollars. It's well documented, both in Oregon and across the country, that bicycle tourism has a positive economic impact on the local economy. And it's no wonder that Independence has taken on bike tourism full steam and has benefited as a result. The goal of the Monmouth Bike Ped Committee is to establish the bike tourism camp as the first step to position Monmouth within the growing bike tourism taking place across Oregon. And we don't want to be left behind. I request that the city council view the idea of the bicycle tourist camp not as a neighborhood issue, but as a way to bring economic benefit to the entire city. The neighbors around the park have brought up their concern about using the city park. In particular, we heard that this will increase the transient problem in the park. But upon examination, this concern is not supported by national or state data. Bicycle tourism does not cause an increase in transient problems or crime. Gentle Woods Park is a city park supported by city tax dollars. Establishing the tourist camp is about bringing economic benefit for the entire city. And with that, the neighborhood around the city park will also see benefits. I know people like the status quo and worry about what may happen when things change. Making change is usually not easily accepted. For example, these days, we have well-respected public institutions that at one time were thought to be very bad ideas. Few people know that there was vehement public opposition for the plan to have professional firefighters. People not only hated the idea, they even fought against firefighters themselves. It's a good thing that local leaders saw the personal and economic benefit of moving to a professionally trained workforce to deal with fires. Without this foresight, more lives would have been lost and more cities would have burned to the ground. Another example is the idea of compulsory public education. Today, we don't question public education, but initially, people fought the idea. Both these changes were scary at first, but they turned out to be really great for the community. Now, the bike camp isn't like public education or hiring professional firefighters. But today, the city council has an opportunity to look at the economic benefit that will come with positioning Monmouth as part of the bicycle tourism. Making changes does not come without risk. It's the fear of these unknown risks that can cause, that can slow progress and its accompanying benefits. In the case of the bike tourism camp, the risk is minimal. This is a six-month trial that we would like to conduct that could bring economic benefits to the entire city. The risk is worth it. People don't like change, but sometimes leaders have to help people see the benefit to change by experiencing how well it works. The city council has the opportunity to envision a path to economic benefits for Monmouth by approving the bicycle tourist camp and joining the bike tourism industry in Oregon. Thank you.
Next on the list, Al Oplinger.
Thank you, Al Oplinger. And I live at 848 Craven Street North, the very last house on Craven Street. And our property is probably about, as the crow flies, about a block and a half from 99W. I support bicycling, and I support the concept of having a bicycle overnight place here in Monmouth. And training for some of my longer runs, I would often bicycle north on the bike path, and afar east is the golf course, and then back to get in shape. Running-wise, I need to let you know that I was on the committee and involved in establishing the first-ever mini marathon, 1973. Jane and I have probably participated in over 500 runs in here in the valley. So anyway, running and bicycling. We checked out the site proposed in Gentle Woods Park, took a tape measure along, and as best we could measured, and finding that the site, the fire site and permanently attached picnic table is about 145 feet from the edge of 99W. The amount of traffic on 99W would be a great deterrent to satisfactory sleeping in Gentle Woods Park. The semi trucks, which continue through the night, by the way, how many of you were awake with me at 3:12 this morning? Semi trucks. I got my earplug, put it in my upper ear, and buried my head in the pillow. Most every morning, I am awakened early in the morning, 4, 4:30, 5:00, by the traffic. In addition to the noise of the traffic and the semis going north and coming in and gearing down as they enter Monmouth, there's also a fair amount of vibration as any vehicle, even a passenger car, crosses the bridge over Ash Creek on 99W. And if you go there in stand at the picnic table, you can feel the vibration from the traffic. It is not a desirable site for overnight camping. Main Street Park would be far better. The bicycle repair station is there, restrooms are there, the businesses, we've talked, some have talked about the economic benefits of having cyclists here, additional tourists. And Main Street Park is surrounded by businesses that would welcome additional customers. So, I support the idea of overnight bike camping here in Monmouth, but I feel that it is wrong to consider placing it in Gentle Woods Park. Thank you.
And next is Elizabeth Waver.
My name is Elizabeth, and I'm a 31-year resident of Monmouth. And I also am not opposed to the idea of a bicycling camp happening in Monmouth. I ride my bike to work every single day. I'm a big biking fan. However, Gentle Woods does not seem like the best choice for it. I feel like, for many reasons that you just listed, the city park would be better, especially as a trial. It is closer to the businesses. It is a little less private, which means that it's much easier to patrol, to keep an eye on things that are happening there. It is regularly, I think, cleaned up. I'm concerned with the plan. I haven't heard a concrete plan of who is going to check when people leave their bicycle camp for the night. Have they left beer bottles behind? Have they left garbage behind? How exactly does the registration process work? Will we prohibit Monmouth independent citizens, say a 19-year-old, couple of teenagers, who are looking for a good who are looking for a good place to have a party outside of their house? Or to spend an evening with their significant other? Are they allowed to be bicycle tourists even though they live in town? I would really love to see a little more of a plan. And if there is one, it hasn't been made very clear to us. We asked this at the meeting, too. The registration process should be a little more transparent before there's a decision. And the idea of the city park appeals a lot more to most of your citizens. We feel safer. It is not inside the neighborhood in the same way. There is more visibility. The city, you guys will know, everybody will know right away. If somebody hasn't checked out of their campsite at ten o'clock in the morning at Main Street Park, we'll see it. If somebody hasn't checked out of their campsite at ten o'clock in the morning at Gentle Woods Park, the first person to find that out is going to be a child. I understand that many bicycle tourists are probably wonderful and responsible people, but not everybody is a wonderful and responsible person. And I do not want my eight-year-old daughter and her friends who play at that park to come out one morning and find a hungover, half-dressed person stumbling out of their tent to use the bathroom first thing in the morning. Those are concerning to me and I feel like we could address a lot of those by placing that in the more open, more public city park. Thank you.
I believe that concludes everyone who.
I came in after the list was gone. Can I make some comments?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. I'm Mike Boltsley. I'm on the pedestrian, Bike Pedestrian Committee. And I had a long statement to read, but I think you've heard a lot of the details of it. And so, I'm just going to skip to the end. And the main crux of the statement I want to make is that the Willamette Valley is a popular cycling destination. Making Monmouth a town known to be friendly for cycling will draw other cyclists to town. We're not going to magically make Monmouth the destination for cyclists overnight. It's going to take a lot of small changes, such as a bike repair stand that we've had installed recently, bicycle racks downtown in the parks, safe routes for cyclists, as well as a variety of different bicycle tourist-friendly accommodations. Bicycle tourism is growing. We can send all that business to Independence and Rickroyal, but we can grow with our neighboring cities. The discussion about the bike campground is ultimately a discussion about whether we want tourists to simply pass through Monmouth on their way somewhere else or whether we want them to stop, visit, and spend money in our city. A one-year trial run of a bicycle tourist campground isn't going to change the world. It's not going to change for good or bad, but it represents what sort of community that we want to be. And as our city council, you get to choose which vision of Monmouth you prefer. Do we want a city that's attracted to tourists, which will bring money to local businesses and help the city grow? Or do we want a community that people bike and drive through on their way to someplace else? Do we want to promote a healthy lifestyle, healthy lifestyles by having a town where people see cycling and cycle tourism as viable activities? Or do we want a town where people drive to Gentle Woods Park and then drive home? So, thank you for your time and consideration of the Bike Ped Committee proposal. I know you've been hearing about this now for months on end and I appreciate all the time that people have taken to come and talk to you about their concerns about the campground.
Thank you. Thank you.
Over here, we have something.
I didn't realize you had to sign up. I didn't realize you were going to take speech tonight. Would it be possible for me to speak?
Sure, go ahead.
My name is Donna Cable. I live at eight thirty-five North High Street, directly across the street from Gentle Woods Park. I am not opposed to bicycle pedestrian, of having people come to, bicycle tourists to our town. Over the past six months since the neighborhood was made aware of the proposal, I have listened to comments for and against it, weighed my own experiences and concerns, been asked numerous times, why would we do this? Because of the many concerns expressed, I have heard nothing to change my opinion that this is not a good idea to have camping in Gentle Woods Park. It is obvious that far more persons are against it than for it. I.e., city council hearings, citizens' comments at council meetings, February thirteenth informational meeting, and a petition submitted to the council with over two hundred signatures against it, almost all the people in the neighborhood surrounding the park. Gentle Woods Park is a lovely, serene, natural setting enjoyed by hundreds of people for many occasions and activities throughout the year. People who don't live near the park may not be aware that hardly a weekend day goes by, May through October, that there isn't an end-of-the-stool outing, a daycare group, birthday celebration, wedding, family reunion, class reunion, church service, youth activity, or other type of gathering. Sometimes, as many as three activities going on in different parts of the park at one time. I know this because my window, my living room window overlooks the park. Daily, families come to play on the playground, play ball, walk, and exercise their dogs, enjoy a picnic. Groups of mothers come with their children. Many people come to walk and enjoy nature and the wildlife or just sit quietly in a safe, serene setting. Having a substantial portion of the park, as I read, staked to demarcate designated area for camping from three P.M. to ten A.M. would certainly be intrusive. Bicycle friendly, Bicycle Pedestrian Friendly Committee representatives say Main Street is used throughout the summer, so camping there doesn't make sense. It seems that the same would apply to Gentle Woods Park. If camping were allowed in Main Street, bicycle tourists could enjoy the concerts, partake of other community events, have access to restrooms, be aware and visit our beautiful Western Oregon University campus and frequent our local businesses. Other concerns are open restrooms after dark and the activities that could occur, those activities, which were the very reason for closing the restrooms after dark. More time for facilities to monitor as part of the proposal activities in the park. According to the notes from February fifteenth Town Hall meeting, we have a reduced number of officers available for patrol. Should we expect them to leave their routine duties to monitor overnight campers? We cannot be assured that all bikers spending the night are fifty-year-old cyclists and wives. We need to be mindful that large cities, i.e. Salem, are starting to expel people who choose to live outdoors. Where will these people go? I don't know if you read the front page of the Statesman Journal this morning about the problems that they're having with people. People have no place to go. They're going to go somewhere. And we need to be mindful of that. I'm sure the Bicycle Pedestrian Friendly Committee has the best intentions, but a more appropriate camping site needs to be proposed. Thank you.
Rich, did you have a comment?
So, Rich Graham of Monmouth. I want to point out one thing that I've heard from the Bike Committee Group that's bothered me during most of their speeches. It's been clear that they are indicating to you what they want. I'm a little offended by the fact that, by their own admission, they're aware that there's strong community opposition to the campground and that they are asking you specifically to not do your job to represent the community, but rather represent their own personal interests. And I hope that you realize you are here as representatives of the community, not of just singular individuals. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, clarifying the next action.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can I make a comment? I would like to acknowledge that the council also received a letter from Sean Cotton and I would like to thank her for writing to us and acknowledge that her letter was in opposition to the campground.
So, at this point in time, to clarify, there will be no decision tonight. I will be reading this for the first reading and then it will go to the next meeting for a second reading and a vote. So, an ordinance amending Monmouth City Code, section nine point one five point zero four zero relating to camping in Gentle Woods Park. And I declare this passes first reading. And we'll move on to item number three, which is beekeeping ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a discussion recently about beekeeping and the basic idea is we found out we had a property in town that had multiple hives and they were basically going outside their yard and going to other people's yards, causing some issues. So, we had a couple of discussions on doing a simple ordinance that would limit that. The ordinance presented in front of you was limiting the hives to two, just maintaining the hives to good condition. If you have inactive hives, make sure they're inactive and then the honey production just could personally use aid on consent, you know, selling that. At that last meeting, we knew that the state was going to come with some guidelines for beekeeping, so we wanted to make sure that they came up with, didn't conflict with our ordinance. City attorney and staff has taken a look at the guidelines and they don't really have any bearing on our ordinance. So, we're recommending the council take action on the ordinance.
Can I ask some questions?
Sure. Hang on, let me get myself in order here. Well, there won't be a motion on this tonight, so there will only be discussions. So, if you'd like to make some statements.
I'd just like to ask some questions.
Okay.
So, I'm curious if this issue has been brought up by anyone and anyone else in the community? How many people have brought up the issue of bees?
The issue's brought up by Council Johnson. That's where it came from.
So, since the state does have guidelines as well as OSU, and I have copies of some of those statements within the guidelines, why do we need a separate regulation if the state has guidelines already for beekeeping?
Yeah, most of their guidelines just kind of care of bees, taking care of the hives. Ours' key thing was limiting the number of hives. So, under the state guidelines, there would be no limit on how many hives you could have.
The state does have a limit of five hives.
You have to register.
Yes, and then you pay a fee and that fee goes to OSU to help fund bee research, which is good to have more honeybees. So, because people can't make honey and sell it, why can't they sell it? Isn't that limiting economic progress in our community?
You're a home. And so, the idea is that homes, just for personal use, you shouldn't be running a business out of your house.
Okay, so we don't have home businesses?
We do have home life businesses.
Yeah, you can. And what's an interesting one there is we know there's lots of folks in town that are running businesses that we aren't aware of. But if it gets to a level of kind of an impact on the neighborhood, then we actually have a home occupation for that price.
So, if I had two hives and made honey, I could use it, but I can't sell it right at the farmer's market? Okay. If ultimately we do approve this, what would be the process if, let's say, someone in the community has, because we're saying it's two hives, no matter how much property you have. Say, someone had an acre and they wanted to have more hives and they wanted to follow the regulation and they wanted to get state approval. What would the process be for somebody to come in and say, I'd really like to get a variance on this regulation?
As presented right here, there would be no process. It's just a strict limitation. And two, if council wants to consider, you know, larger properties doing a stair-step approach, you could certainly do that.
Okay, something that's graduated. Okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
Well, I want to broaden it up, so I'll hold it. An average hive is twenty-five thousand bees. So, if you have five hives, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand bees. Okay? If you're two houses away, you have a hundred thousand bees in your yard. The people behind these hives, she has been stung many times and she has gone to hospital twice. Today, she was stung four times today in her backyard. I went down and took a picture. There is twenty, there's five hives. They're there. They have no feeders. They have no anything. I'm not against having bees. It's just a restriction, same as, as far as I'm concerned, of ducks or chickens, that we have the same ordinance. Do we have twenty-five chickens or we have six? So, I'm just trying to say is, we need to cut it down. What is the option for us to kind of help regulate it? And, you know, this person can't even go in their yard. And the neighbor next to me can't go in her yard either. She's already complained to me. Probably the only place in town. I don't know, but we're trying to get a handle on it. But an average hive will produce between six and twelve quarts of honey per year. So, if you had two hives, you're talking maybe anywhere from twelve to twenty-four quarts of honey. How much do you use? I don't know. You know, that depends on the person. I'm just trying to put a guideline because I can take you out today and show you the feces on my pickup that I had to scrub one hour to get it all off from the bees because they land on my picket because it's warm in the mornings to warm up. So, I don't, you know, before they had two hives and there was no problem. They went to six and now they're down to five. So, if you want to know what the reason behind this, it's the same thing as a neighbor had four chickens, six turkeys, and four geese in the backyard. So, I mean, we're trying to create something that, we're not eliminating, we've got to have bees. There's no doubt about it. But to be within a reason is what I'm trying to say.
I was just trying to get a better picture since I'm brand-new and they said, ask questions. I'm asking questions just to make sure I understand.
And that's good, and I just tried to answer for you to what's really going on.
Thank you.
So, I have a couple of questions. First, with a statement, I think it's usually a bad idea to make laws based on one situation. And also, even if there are only two hives there, with all due respect, broiled with your truck, there's still going to be bees coming over and pooping on your truck with two hives. The new regulations that have been promulgated by the Oregon State Department of Agriculture recommends that, rather than writing new laws, that municipalities take advantage of their nuisance code and have the nuisance officer make a call on the people whose bees are stinging people. And this would be people who had one hive. If you've got one hive and the bees are stinging your neighbors, one of our, I think the police department has an officer who responds to nuisance calls. They could go out and say, hey, you know, what's going on with your bees? They're stinging your neighbors. Want to be more careful about that. Rather than saying, well, sorry, you've got two hives. I guess you can have them. Also, the research on, apiary research shows that that one well-maintained hive can produce as much as forty pounds of honey a year. So, I don't know what a family is going to do with eighty pounds of honey. So, clearly, if you've got two hives, you've got a lot of honey. You want to do something with it. Would this law allow those homeowners to give the honey away to someone who would take it to a farmer's market and sell it for them and then give them the money back?
We don't want to look that closely at the ordinance.
This is important is that we're just going to...
What we don't want is commercial enterprises, you know, just dotting the landscape all over the city. I think if we don't have that kind of activity, there's probably not going to be a lot of looking at where the end point of that honey is.
What about, what about rather than writing a new law, we just enforce the nuisance regulations?
Yeah, well, this, I'm glad you raised that. This ordinance, if somebody has two hives, those hives are permitted and they're allowed. They would still be subject to any nuisance violations if those bees cause a nuisance. So, this isn't a get-out-of-jail-free card for, you know, for a nuisance issue. If they have two hives and those two hives are causing a nuisance, then they're still subject to nuisance enforcement. So, this, yeah, this doesn't excuse the operator from liability for nuisance if their bees are causing a nuisance.
Then what's the point of this?
Well, the point, I think, was Council Johnson, you know, the idea of a numerical limit is probably, I mean, I guess he can speak for it, but I think the idea was that a numerical limit would probably reduce the incidence of nuisance. Well, my deal was, they'd have two for three or four years, no problem. When they jump to six, five, the problem increased. We're just trying to, it's like, okay, I want to raise, have a dozen eggs every day, so I want a dozen chickens. I mean, it's just, you know, so, I mean, I'm just trying to say, there's something that we can say with, and in a nuisance ordinance, I'm going to tell you, it'd take a while to enforce that, if you make it work. And I'm just trying to say, try to get ahead of the game, I guess, is one thing. And we can have hives all over town. I could have two in that yard and two down the road. But it's just the idea that five is a lot of hives. And like you said, you have to register. And I went to beekeepers and asked them and they, they say five is a lot of hives. So, I didn't realize there was twenty-five thousand bees per hive.
Well, if they have five, they should be registered to the state as well. So, you should be monitoring it.
Good luck there. Well, that doesn't limit, without an ordinance, that... Well, that doesn't limit, without an ordinance, that they can still have five hives.
True.
And with an ordinance, they can have two.
That's correct, yeah.
But if the bees are stinging your neighbor, like they did for stings today, could the neighbor call the police and say, "Can you send a nuisance officer out here to check on this"?
What I'm saying was, she had no complaint until it upped to none. That's what I'm saying.
Was she getting stung pretty regularly?
Last year, quite regularly. I'd go to the hospital, but I'm just saying, she didn't have any complaint, I didn't either, until the number came up. Okay? That's what I'm saying. That's what I asked about an ordinance. Simple, very simple ordinance.
We know our brother's home, the communities have similar ordinance.
Then Hillsborough have one.
Oh, you've got varieties of it. Nothing, nothing as simple as this, so you have a lot of, what a lot of cities have is registration ordinances. Councilor Johnson didn't want to go there. Ours is probably simpler than anything I've seen, just in terms of the approach to get at it. Cities do regulate, but not exactly like this.
I have another question. Who's going to be enforcing this? I mean, clearly, if we pass it, Councilor Johnson is going to be one to call somebody to say, "Can you come enforce this"?
Code enforcement, it's a civil infraction.
And who does that?
That's the police department.
The police department?
And parking, abandoned cars. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any further discussion?
I don't see this as a bee issue, because it could be, like you were saying, well, it could be turkeys, it could be peacocks, chickens, you know? It could be a number of things, so...
Well, we already have the chicken, duck.
Right, but I mean, there's a lot of animals out there. We're going to make an ordinance for...
And you can't have lamb, or you can't have sheep.
There is a fairly broad ordinance that prohibits most, what you would consider farm-like kind of animals from the city. Chickens was an exception, basically, an exception to that, because they have been banned as well.
But I just, I don't know, I just, in my mind, I see it as, as, is there a difference between well-behaved bees and bad-behaved bees? You know, so, so, it's, you know, a person, is a person capable of having five hives without it being nuisance to the neighborhood, as opposed to a person, you know, two, has, you know, those thumbsized killers that are, you know, chasing people around.
Well, this only allows honeybees, so that's, yeah, we're not going to have lots of honeybee.
So, one of the things, and I brought this up in our prior discussions, is I have a large backyard, I have a large flowering plant during the spring and fall that brings thousands of bees to get the pollen there. I don't have hives. Maybe somebody in the neighborhood does, or maybe there's just naturally occurring large clusters of bees. And that was a challenge I had with trying to do a limit on this, because it's, it's like, could I get cited because I have plants that attract the bees?
No.
Because there's so many bees, but they're not hives?
No, that's right.
Yeah. So, that's the thing that was like, when Roy brought this up, it was like, well, there's so many bees in this neighborhood, but depending on who has flowers with pollen can change how many bees are in the neighborhood. So, that was where I was challenged by this, this ordinance, is that it's going to only have two hives, but it doesn't control the behavior of the bees. Where they go for pollen is going to control the behavior of the bees.
Well, right, but the density, you know, that is five hives, for I can say, in Roy's instance.
Right.
I mean, you know, they're going to die, they're going to stay cool. Well, they're going to take the first ones that come up, so if your backyard is there, you're going to get nailed. And, you know, I live across town, and I'm probably going to be all right with that, you know? So, I think the concentration will go outward, and I think that's the, what the intention was, was to just, you know, sort of initially limit that concentration to a reasonable number. And, you know, I, I was initially attracted to the concept of the nuisance deal, but, you know, it's hard to define a nuisance, really. You get into difficulties with that. I mean, what's a parking dog that's really a nuisance? You know? I mean, I could imagine it, but what I imagine might be different than what someone else does. So, whether it's two, whether it's five, you know, I don't know, but I think that's a simple way to reduce the concentration.
Any further discussion? So, this is an ordinance relating to the keeping of bees. I declare it passes first reading. Thank you. And with that, I'm going to, I'm going to change the order here. Are there any council comments? Council comments?
No.
Okay.
The production, the Central High School production of The Lion King, I just want to publicly thank Whitney Boyack and Jeff Witton, everybody else who participated and helped out in that. It was a large cast of a lot of small people, and they wrangled them pretty well for several weeks, and so I'm just appreciative of all the efforts and everything that went into that production. It was a great show, and everybody had a lot of fun. So, it's just another example of the community coming together and doing something great, so.
I want to say thanks for the whole community in the western term up here. Was a lot of participation in it, a lot of people in the town brought a lot of money, brought a lot of money, and everybody that I sat with up there that was from out of town really liked our town, and the people were friendly. That's what they said. That was a great rapport for our town.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody that came out and everybody that's been so welcoming, and I appreciate my first city council meeting here having so much community, but thank you.
I would just ask that we be certain, and I saw you write it down, so I'm sure we will, Scott, but I think that the lead asbestos issue, interesting to see what we have on the books currently, if there's something else that we could beef that up. That's clearly a serious issue. You know, the burn-to-learn deal, that's a fire department issue, but I think the lead and the asbestos piece is there, and I don't know exactly how this needs to be discussed, but we all got, I believe we all got a email from a person that lives on Myrtle Street, and when Al Offinger was talking about being woken up in the middle of the night, I thought it was because of the jade break issue, the trucks coming into town and using the, you know, the compression to slow down coming into town. That is an issue, whether that just needs to be noted with the police department for enforcement, or whether there's, I believe there's adequate notice on that, and we have ordinances relative to it, but it's an issue. I live in that neighborhood, and her comments were not out of line, and there's others in the neighborhood that could speak to the same. Donna, you're in the same boat, and Tawny, you're in the same boat that we're in, you can probably hear that. You know, I think, Mr. Mayor, we need to, we need to provide these people with sort of a roadmap ahead in terms of decisions, vis-à-vis the bike campground. We spent more time talking about beekeeping, of which, you know, really, there's no opponent or opponent here. And we've got a lot of folks here that were invested in the decision on the bike campground. So, I just, if we could get a, so they could walk away with a clear understanding of when, what the next step is and what the decision points are going to be.
The second reading would be on your next council meeting.
Second reading, next council meeting.
And then a decision.
And a decision on that number.
Got you.
And will there be, will there be sort of discussion on that, I'm anticipating?
Yes.
By the council?
Right, council discussion.
And what about other people that might be in the audience?
Well, at every meeting, there's the opportunity for people to speak on an item that's on the agenda by signing the sign-in sheet.
And we'll be able to query them on, I mean, could we...
Well, I would, I would say at that point, we've taken the public hearing, it's not truly public hearing, but we've taken citizen comments, and then it would be up to us, the council, to have discussion amongst ourselves as to how the decision's going to be made.
So, if I had a question of Kyle, that ship to sail, Chair of the Bike Pet Committee, I can't go get a question answered from him. Come on, next, our next council meeting.
I'm just trying to, it's up to you, it's your process.
But if you have, if you have questions, it might be important that you raise them between now and the next council meeting, so that they can be presented, so that Kyle could address that question in a coming or the next meeting. But I, what I want you guys is to have enough information to make the decision that you want to make, so if it is asking questions of people who've provided information, then yes.
Well, that one was, I wanted to hear all the subjects tonight. Now I have some questions I want to ask them at the next one, and it might lead one to the other. I mean, I could go ask them personally, but that's not an open discussion between the two. I'd rather have discussion, just like we did tonight, at the next one. I have some questions to ask, but I wanted to see everybody put forward what they had, so I can figure out what questions I want to ask, I guess is what I'm saying. Okay, and, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just for the council information, it's passed first reading, it doesn't, has to be read a second time, it doesn't have to be read a second time and adopted at the next meeting. If you have discussion and you want to direct changes in it, then you could direct me to make changes in it and bring it back to you at a subsequent meeting, and actually have it read the second time with any amendments made in the, in the ordinance. So, it's, you don't have to vote up or down on what you saw tonight, though. It's first reading, you can amend it, there's a process for amending it after first reading and before second and final reading.
Yeah, and we've done that for a couple of times.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, what is, is there a time crunch bearing down on this here with the bike pit, the bicycle campground?
The simplest one is it's coming on season.
Okay, so...
They want to advertise it, it's what they want to do.
So, can, can we hear what the deadlines are, or what the, how soon you need a decision in the council?
Well, I think ideally it'd be April.
The first meeting in April?
Yeah, I'm not sure what, I would hope you can make a decision. I think you've gotten a lot of input, and I know you'll be able to make a decision. I've seen, do you need to delay this for some reason, or...
All right, so we have to sort of respectfully ask everyone to come again on April 3rd?
No, it's your choice to come to a meeting.
Well, thank you, thank you for coming tonight, and I guess, if we have questions, we have to ask you on April 3rd, so I do apologize for that.
I have a question for Lane, probably, because I'm assuming you're the author of the ordinance of, on the camping ordinance. It identifies four people, and the ordinance sunsets on 12/31/2018, and other than that, it says the city manager can do what he wishes. Now, there's a lot of detail provided by the Bike Pet Committee, and while I don't doubt that Scott would, you know, enforce that or would implement that, I would like to be able to give assurance to others that, is there something attached to this that would provide...
No, you know, what you got here was the, really, the first iteration of this, and you know, I haven't been directed to make any changes since you first saw this in January. And I think at the time, the thinking was that to direct the city manager to establish the rules, that there would be some flexibility and be able to change from time to time based on circumstances as they arrived. Certainly, at the time I drafted this, I hadn't seen the list of specific regulations that we saw tonight in the bike pet presentation. So, you could, at your next meeting, you know, say, "No, we want these, we want these itemized conditions built into the ordinance and make them actually part of the ordinance." Or Scott could have, if you wanted to direct him, Scott could have a draft set of the rules for you to look at at the next meeting, and those rules then would be adopted, basically, by this ordinance. It wouldn't have to be incorporated in the body of the ordinance itself?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that it incorporated in the body of the ordinance.
You might want to ask Scott to have some draft rules based on what you saw here tonight, so that you can see what the parameters would be.
It just, it just would provide some, you know, assurance, should this pass, that there is, that this is how it's going to be done, because barring, you know, four-person limit and sunsets on 12/31/18 is the only, the only specific element there.
Right.
Tawny, does anybody else have those?
I can work with Scott, if you're ready.
And I'm going to ask her for a vote or...
Yeah, draft some regulations.
Just something that would provide some...
I'd like to see more heat.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Are we still taking council comments?
If you have another one, yes.
Would it be possible to have the agenda reflect the path, the fact that people, citizens may indeed speak regarding items that are on the agenda, that they just need to sign up on a different sign-up sheet? Because right now, it just says this time is reserved for citizens to comment on items that are not on the agenda.
Right, there's instructions on the table as they come in that shows them that there's sheets and information.
Would it be possible to have the agenda reflect that? Because a lot of people read the agenda on the city website, and they might want to be prepared to speak regarding an item that's on the agenda before they arrive and find out that there's a sign-up sheet on the table. It'd just be a line, if it just say, "Citizens who want to speak on items that are on the agenda are requested to sign up on the sheet in the back of the room."
Yeah, we can do that.
Or even attach it to the...
That's going to be easy, just to add it to the status to comment, that way. And I can actually, when I open the meeting, I can make a comment about that as well for people who came in who didn't see the agenda but are here to make comments. So, with that, any other comments? We do not have a work session tonight, so I'm going to read our executive session statement, and the city council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing performance evaluation of public officers and employees. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192.660, II, performance evaluation of public officers and employees, which allows the council to meet in executive session. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. No discussion may be made, decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to ultimate session and welcome the audience back into the room. It is not anticipated that action will be taken this evening after returning from executive session. So, with that, we'll take a five-minute break and we'll come back to executive session.